Meeting for Thursday, September 18th, 2025. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bimonthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we discuss fully our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board members, we encourage you to attend, watch, and listen to our committee discussion resulting in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public and visitors are welcome. This is Camp House, please call the roll.
Ms. Ballard.
Present.
Ms. Rarica.
Present.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Mrs. Towner.
Present.
Mr. Atwood.
Present. Now, I'd like to ask everyone to please stand, face the flag for the pledge.
Flag, present. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our housekeeping list here is Section 1.04. This is the adoption of tonight's agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the agenda?
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Towner.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes. With the agenda having been adopted, we'll move on to Items 1.05, the minutes for the Finance Committee meeting that was held on August 14th, 2025. 1.06, this is the regular board meeting minutes, held August 14th, 2025. 1.07, this is the minutes for the special board meeting that was held on September 9th, 2025. And 1.08, this is the minutes for the committee meeting that was also held on September 9th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve Items 1.05 through 1.08?
No motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? This is Camp House, please call the roll.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Towner.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes. All right. Having gone through all that, Section 2 in our agenda is Presentations. 2.01, this is the Financial Forecast and Assumption Presentation, and I'll turn the floor over to our Treasurer, Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is time for our financial forecast. We always adopt it in the fall and then again in the spring. This first slide, you'll see our beginning cash balance on July 1st and our ending cash balance on June 30th. Our projected revenues at $33,391,000. Our projected expenditures at $33,185,000. And our gain for the year is a slight $205,000, which will impact our ending cash balance in a positive way. On the revenue side, I'd like to take this chart just to break it out and show you what's very important to us, how our revenues are broken out. Our local taxes come in at 58%. You'll see in the top part over on the right, total local taxes are $19277,000. Of that, real estate property taxes are $17666,000. And public utility taxes are $1.6 million. Public utility taxes are commercial paid only tax. Right next to that is an orange, state funding at 28%. The Fair School Funding Plan at 6.2 million of that. Restricted is at 1.3 million. And then finally, the state share of local taxes at 1.6 million. And that is the discounts that you'll see on your tax bill for homestead and rollback. The state gives us a small portion of those discounts. The state returns to us in state share of local taxes. Projected all other revenues at 4.8 million. A great portion of that is TIF revenues that we see for economic development. I would like to say that the state's funding has fallen to just $876 per pupil when you break it down to a per pupil basis. That's how low our state funding is at this time. $876 per pupil. Yes. And when you think, most school districts spend about 20,000 annually on a student and will get $876 per pupil in core funding from the state. On our budget side, payroll and benefits make up 77% of our total general fund costs. You'll see that in the green there. Purchase Services is at 17% and all other expenses at 6%. This is a complicated little slide, so I'm going to try to explain it a little more than normal. The graph on the left in the blue and orange, you'll see the blue is revenues and orange is our, I'm sorry, blue is revenues and orange is expenditures. And next year, in 2026, or next year in 2027, you'll see that our revenues are less than our expenditures. And moving forward for the other four years of the forecast, that remains the same, where our expenditures are higher than our revenues, meaning that we are in negative cash flow. So that projects to the next side, projected cash balance. If you're having negative cash flow, it makes sense in that your projected cash balance is going to start to fall. So you'll see, starting in 2026, on the right side of that graph, those blue bars are starting to shrink. That is projecting our cash balance falling from '27 down to '2030. By the year of 2030, you'll see that our cash balance is $5,647,000 and the net loss over that period of time is $4 million. So even though that cash balance sounds like a lot of money, $5 million is a lot of money. We'll talk about it when we break it out in a per day, how much we need per day to explain just how tight that really is. When you look at the forecast, over the past five years, our annual rate of change for revenues has been 2.47%, meaning that our revenues have grown by 2.47% annually. When you're looking forward in the forecast, I only have 1.25% moving forward. And you might question that. I would question that myself also. The decrease in estimated revenues has several different factors, including economic development ordinances that have been passed by the city that has taken away a lot of our new construction revenues. And that affects not only our real estate revenues, but affects our payment in lieu of taxes also. Finally, as our millage rates decrease, it decreases our old TIF revenues also, which again, decreases our revenues moving forward, which is why my estimates moving forward are not at the 2.47, but at 1.25. Furthermore, if the state is successful in stopping all inflationary growth for real estate taxes, our forecast will have to be restated as our revenues will be too high, even more than what I have now. On the expenditure side, in the orange, you'll see the rate of change from the last five years is 3.89. The rate of change in the future that has been estimated is 3.23. There's been a lot of changes in the last five years over our forecasts, including the influx of ESAR money and how we spent that ESAR money and how it saved the general fund money. And so I really feel like 3.23 is a better estimate of what our expenditures are going to change, how they're going to increase rather than at the 3.89. Here's where we're going to talk about our days' cash on hand. A better look at the history of Norwood's general fund cash balance is displayed in days' cash and how it will fall within the forecast estimates. So when we talk about days' cash on hand, that means how many days, your cash balance, if you divide it in how much you spend per day, how many days will that cash balance last you if you had no further revenues coming in? And so in 2022, you'll see that we had 188 days' cash. If you go back even further, in 2019, our cash balance was only at 121 days' cash. So if you look in those ESAR years, you'll see that we really were able, that those ESAR grant funds really did help us grow our general fund days' cash. Moving forward, as we spend into our carryover, of course, our cash balance is going to fall. Our days' cash on hand will also fall for that same reason. This year, our days' cash on hand will probably end of the year about 158 days. The next year will be 145, and then 129, 98. And then in the final year of the forecast, I have a five-year forecast, you'll see that we are at 54 days of cash. And that is an important number for us to talk about because our board policy does say that we will always have 90 days' cash as an emergency status. And if any year of the forecast does not have 90 days of cash, that the board and administration must discuss that and try to remedy that issue. So we will be looking at that. Looking at our student counts, I'm very happy to say that we are seeing growth in our student counts. If you look, and 2024, two years ago, we were at 1561, which is our low point. Last year, we grew to 1580, and this year, we're up to 1610. I am predicting further growth as we move along, growth not only in our open enrollment, but also in our Montessori programs. Just for some reference, though, in '99, 2000, we had nearly 3,000 students here. But the makeup of Norwood has changed so much into such a, it's a lot more commercial than it was back then. There's a lot more homes back then, I think, than there are now.
More people live in homes.
In 1972, there were 4,200 students on the middle school, high school campuses.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah. So, yeah, lots changed. I had mentioned before that we typically, school districts typically spend about $20,000 annually on a student. And so this is just our per pupil expenditures. You'll see 2024, last year, two years ago, we were at $19,713. Last year, 20,806. This year, I'm projecting 20,615. It does go up as we move along a little bit as our expenditures grow. When you further break it down into a daily rate, that when you take that per pupil spending for a year and you break it down into a daily rate, that breaks down to $115 per day per student. But if you break it down even further, which, you know, I like finances, I'm going to break it down even further, and take it so that you look at all the state and federal and business taxes and take all that out of it, so that you, you're only looking at what do our residents pay to send a student to Norwood to go to school? It comes to $37.95 a day, which really is incredible to think with what you can get for money anymore. I mean, it's so expensive to do anything. But we've definitely, we definitely have a good model going on here, where we're educating students very well. We're doing it in a cost efficient, a very cost efficient way. And we're using our state and federal and our business taxes to offset those costs My last slide, I wanted to just compare the last forecast to the current forecast because I do like to have some accountability with that. In the last forecast, the May forecast, on the left-hand side, that gray and orange and blue column, you'll see that revenues are expected to be a little higher. That's a positive number there. So in the current forecast, I'm expecting our revenues to be a little bit higher than they were, than what I expected in May. And in gray, you'll see, and that's other revenue of about 480,000. Revenue from the state is about 200,000. And then taxes are just slightly higher. Unfortunately, about 500,000 of that is from revenues that we should have received last year. Instead, they rolled over so that we're going to receive them this year. Those are not going to continue on. We're not going to continuing, we're not going to continue to get twice what we should get next year. I know that for sure. So even though it's very, it's nice that we are getting that extra sum of money this year and it's making our cash flow positive, it's not going to help us out in the future. However, on the expenditure side, you'll see that the expenditures decreased since the May forecast. We had a very productive summer. We did some work on our transportation costs. We bid out some projects, got some costs down, I'm very happy to say, in purchase services. We did not replace some staff when they left. I was able to tweak the staffing number quite a bit. And so our expenditures are down compared to the May forecast, almost by $600,000. So this is a much better forecast than what we had in May, even though I know with the negative cash flow, it's still very concerning and we're going to take it very serious and we're going to try to see what we can do to balance the next two years for sure. But it is a better forecast than what we saw in May. That's all I had for it. What kind of questions do we have?
I can't remember.
I did have a question. With the increased rate of enrollment predicted, obviously, we don't know what kind of funding we'll get, if any, at all. But with the projected increase, is that supposed to help us with our per pupil rate at all? Will that help us in the wash?
So those are two different things, and that's a very good question. As your student counts increase, your per pupil spending goes down. So it does make you look better, for sure. You're spreading your costs over more students and it's more efficient. So that is true. On the state revenue side, we are on the guarantee. So unofficially, we're not going to see any new revenues for more students until we see a lot more students. We would have to see, we would have to see 1,000 more students to get more revenues.
But it will help us just spreading out the resources.
Yes. However, in the new biennial budget, there were, there were some funding mechanisms put into place outside of the guarantee that said if you saw 5% growth, that you'll get a lump sum of money, additional funding. I have that projected to happen the next biennial. So not this year, next year, but the following two years, I have that, we'll have about 450, 500,000 more each year of the biennium. So as long as we continue to see that growth in our accounts, our student counts, then we will see additional money moving forward. It's just, the student count thing just takes a little bit of time to catch up.
I think it's really important, at least from my perspective, to focus on growth since we are an open enrollment district and we don't want to take every student that comes to us. But we do want to make sure that we are growing the district and we do have the capacity to educate a lot more kids than what we're currently educating at our current staff level. So, you know, if they're spread out over the course of the 13 grades that are counted in that number, you know, we could easily, can easily absorb a lot more kids. I think we could be well over 2,000 students. I think we could be comfortable at 2,200 students. Not saying that you want to get 2,200 students in one year, but I think we do have the ability to. It would be a shock to the system. But I, I do think that if we, if we plan almost kind of like a marketing effort to the communities around here. This is a fantastic school district to have your children educated at, right? It's a hidden gem in, in the greater Cincinnati community and we, there's a lot that we honor that, you know, we should do a better job of sharing with, with the world.
I was bragging on us at the orthodontist and the kid in the next chair was all jealous he didn't go to Norwood. I said, well, you can switch. It's open enrollment. And I brag about our um, I brag about our scholarship a lot, a lot. Especially because my kids are at that stage.
Yeah.
Maybe it was the next page that I saw something that I had.
Did you have a question?
I think like, I know you said that one of the policies is that we have to have 90 days cash in hand. And that because by the time it's 2030, it's 54 days cash in hand, that we'll have to start having conversations. It just feels really dire, like looking at the graphs, it feels really dire. And so I'm just curious, like what, and maybe that's just in a conversation we'll have in the future, but like what options do we have? Because I hear you on like wanting to bring more students into the district and I agree that it's really great. And I want more kids to have an opportunity to be educated by excellent teachers. And as you don't hire more teachers, but you increase enrollment and you stretch resources, that like there is a tipping point at which we're stretched then too. So it's a balancing act, I would imagine. So I was just curious what.
We are lucky that our class sizes are currently really small.
Yeah, okay.
To the point where sometimes we didn't have enough students in a classroom and maybe we had three teachers. That third classroom could be easily split between two of those teachers and we could move the third teacher to a grade that had more need.
Okay.
So we can shift people around depending on where the students are. If, you know, if this year sophomore class is bigger than the eighth grade class, well, then we're going to pull that teacher up as long as their licenses match. You know what I mean? So we have been really good about taking the teachers and putting them in with the grade level needed or the building that they're needed so that we don't have to lose our staff because we are projecting this kind of growth and we want to be able to put them back when we have need of that classroom growth. So right now, we're lucky. We just, we have a very small classroom student to teacher ratio, which is amazing. And we don't want to make that so big that we're fighting it and swimming upstream, but we have the room to grow. I call it our Thanksgiving pants. We've got a little stretch that we've got room for and we can be comfortable.
And as far as the board policy, the board policy just says that I, that I must bring this to the board's attention. And so the last year of the forecast is always a year that you want to keep an eye on, but it's not your focus. So our focus is this year and next year and the following year. And so as we move forward, we want to get next year balanced. And that becomes a task that, for one thing, that the amount that we need to balance by is smaller. So it's a lot less, it's a lot less horrible look at. So it's something that we could whittle away at. And then as you balance or get closer to balancing next year, then each year gets better. And so um, I, I'm not trying to be alarmist at all. It's just our board policy does say that I will direct the board's attention to that. And so I'm just, I'm, I'm doing what I'm told to do. Um, but at the same time, our attention is going to be on the next couple of years so that we, um, so that we're being smart. And this is a good thing. You know, we are publicly funded. We are funded on taxes and we want to spend our money in the very best way that we can. And so uh, that is always a goal. Uh, that's always one of the things that treasurers should be doing at all times is, is helping the boards review so that we are always in good stewards of our money. So um, this is just another reminder of, of us pulling back and looking.
I was going to say to Eleni, um, the fifth year, well, as long as I've been here, I don't know why, if it's always this way, but it always looks bad. And we used to call it falling off the cliff and we used to hear falling off the cliff all the time. And then actually COVID happened and saved us strangely. Um, but it always looks like that. And, and if you know that is coming, then you make changes along the way. And so that doesn't become a reality.
Right.
So I think this is a prime example of why the state changed their requirement for the five year forecast. Because you always have these districts that are looking at that fourth and that fifth year, which always looks dire. So you know, Amber and I have been here for, for eight years. And that, you know, I think our first year, I think it was like 10 banks, like that.
Yeah, we didn't have anything in the bank.
It was like no money in that fifth year. I mean, it was.
2017 and we had a, and we had a levy.
It's like we had, we had enough to function, but the idea was if something happens, do we have enough to pay our teachers over summer break? Do we have enough to cover an emergency if, if our, our taxes don't come in? Are we going to be able to make payroll because we're not getting our checks on time? Like it would, that cushion allows us to be flexible with, you know, these other deadlines that have to fall into place for us not to be going, ah, so much left.
So what that does, when you're looking at a five year forecast versus a three year forecast or even a four year forecast, it gives this body of work an opportunity in order to make sure that resources aren't stretched.
Okay.
Or enough foresight to see, you know, do we need to put a levy on the ballot and strategically target the date that that needs to go on?
Okay.
If you're just looking at a three year forecast, which doesn't look that bad, then you're never looking far enough ahead until you're, until you've hit the cliff.
Right.
Right?
Right? And then when you hit the cliff, then you're going to be on a constant cycle of, you know, levy initiatives.
Right.
Right? Because you're trying to catch up. And then if you have a community that doesn't support the levy, or maybe your messaging isn't what it needs to be.
Then it's too late.
Then it's too late. And that's, that is why five year forecasts are so important.
It, it's turning your high beams on on a dark road. You, you can see this far and you're good, but you're not seeing that deer up ahead of you.
Right.
Without those high beams. And that's what this gives us.
And, and I tell you what, I am afraid, I'm afraid for other school districts that don't continue to look at a five year forecast. I, I really do. So.
I'd like to make that a policy going forward that the state may not want it, but I do.
Well, so we, we, we talked about that at the last meeting at developing a more policy for a five year forecast, which I think is going to be on our agenda here in the next month or two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. But um, but that's why this is so important. So yes, that, that fifth year looks dire. But the work that we do in years one and two and three.
This is super helpful context. Yes, thank you all. Thank you.
You give us a good reason to talk about it, which you know we love. So on this slide, I was going to ask about the public utility property taxes, which I guess I never really noticed before, but that is only from businesses?
So public, um, there used to be tangible taxes on all kinds of different non-real estate properties. And now it's only on public utilities. And so that would be like on the wires and poles and substations and just things like that. Even though they're on real estate, it's not, it's not taxes on the land, it's on the equipment, the value of the equipment.
So if you had a business that held a lot of inventory, so like back in the day, GM had a lot of cars that were sitting in their work in progress. So they would pay a property tax on that inventory that would go to the school district.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, I like to point that one out to people as to why we do not have as much money now because businesses used to pay all sorts of fun taxes. So is that only the um, utility company paying that tax and on their poles and on that? So not businesses in general, just the utility companies?
Businesses, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
And then I know you said we're about $20,000 per student per year. And how much was it from the state? Was it 800 or 8,000?
876 dollars is our core funding from the state. Now, there are some.
And that's per year, per student?
Per student.
There are some other things they throw in outside of core funding, but for core funding, it's about $800. And next year, the District of Norwood will be at the lowest state minimums allowed. Um, I don't know if you remember um, back when um, we tried to get the OFC project passed, when they were going to tear down all the historic buildings and build the one big building and everybody hated it and voted no and it didn't pass. Back then, when they were going to build that building, it was going to be like 60 or 70% off. Is, is maybe how it was presented to the public at that time because you would have been 70% funded by the state. At this point in time, next year, next year, you will be 10% funded by the state. That is how low state funding has fallen for Norwood.
We used to get funded, 70% of our funding came from state and now it's 10?
When the state looks at it, they say, it's, it's, it's complicated, but the state says, okay, it takes $8,000 to educate a child. And there, there's some real complicated reasons how they come up with 8,000. But then they say, all right, you're so wealthy, we think that you should have 20%.
Based on property value.
Not income.
Yes, like you should get 20% of your value of your $8,000 should come from local share, 80% of it's the state or vice versa, however they break it down. That's how they break it down. That's how, when they're looking at core funding, that's how they assign who pays what is by what your, what your value, what, what your um, state share is. And, and Brandon's right, it's based on your district's wealth. It's a, it's a compen, it's a combination of property values, parent wealth and um, average income, average household income. It's very complicated.
So then we should be on the kind of higher percentage rate because we are not an affluent district?
No, according to the state, we're an affluent district.
Very affluent.
Oh, really?
Our property values, just shut up.
We're, we're in a similar, we're in the similar bandwidth as Indian Hill.
So. Since I, public was a wealthy district also, property wealth, it's property wealth.
Property wealth.
It's not the income of the residents. It's property wealth.
Because aren't we not considered like in lots of other ways, we are not considered an affluent district?
Well, the, the thing that they have done wrong is the state fails to update all their inputs into their, into their formulas. And so they just let it fall farther and farther and farther behind. So well, of course, property values continue to rise, everything else continues to go up. So yes, of course, our local share is going to continue to get more and more and more valuable and the state's going to continue to fall behind.
And does this happen to all districts since everything rises?
It, it's, it's happening that way for most districts. It's just, I don't know how many districts are actually on the minimum now because right now you can't, we'll go below 10%. So we're, we'll, we'll be there next year.
So that's why it's so important to protect other revenue sources.
This is why, this is why I get really, really upset about real estate taxes.
Me also.
Yes.
Cause I had some fun factoid earlier about our real estate taxes. I forget what it was in our finance meeting.
So Julie, the, the last thing that I want to point out, and thank you so much for this fantastic presentation. The school district is considered a service oriented district. And so when you look at service oriented businesses, um, in order for the business to maintain sustainability, the salary plus benefits need to stay under 80%. 80% is the magic number. If your salary and benefits climb to above 80%, then it is next to impossible for that business to be sustainable. And we're at 77%.
Yeah, you didn't show that slide, but. Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Oh, yep. Um, so wasn't there something like our, our um, property taxes used to pay like 2.67% and now it's paying 1.65% or something? How our property taxes, since we are no longer guaranteed our property taxes because of so many abatement policies that our percentage has gone down?
Our, yeah, we, we don't have any new construction in our forecast anymore because of, um, because of economic development principles that have passed.
Public, we get very upset about property taxes. And we used to factor into these forecasts that you're seeing that are so lovely, um, new development, new construction in the city. And we do not even figure that in anymore. That was it. That was, I was so shocked by that. Or I mean, not because I know they did it, but yeah, that's just gone from our budget. Just gone. They just policyed it out.
Um, on the expenditure side, yes, so personnel costs are at 77%. And our purchase services do have some of our personnel in there. They're, they're cleaning and um,
Right.
transportation and things like that. So yes, we are, we are pushing that 80%. We are getting, we're getting to the point where we're um, the, the problem is, is when you get to the 80%, then you can't, then you can't afford to buy textbooks and buy supplies and, and then you see these, some of these school districts that are just, you know, making people bring in, making parents bring in reins of paper and, and, and it's just that kind of, that kind of stuff where you just can't even, you, you can't take care of your business anymore. You can't run your business anymore. And so you know, you want to be, you just want to be cognizant of that fact that we're getting close to that 80. That's a good point to, to, to look at.
Right. So as, as a board and as a body, you know, we're going to have to think about what the five years look like. And at some point in the future, if we struggle to balance the budget, right? So I think for next year or this year, it's like, what, $800,000 that we're going to have to look at trimming off. At some point, because of the way the funding cycle works in the state of Ohio, there's going to have to be something that's going to change. And that's, that'll probably end up being another levy, not because we want a levy, but because, you know, there's no other way to increase revenue.
Yeah, I know. When my oldest was going into preschool, we did not have preschool here at Norwood because funding had dipped and so it was gone for like a year. And then we had a levy and it came back, but she had to go somewhere else for her first year of preschool because they didn't have it here. And I've told people that who are like, well, what did they do? What's the plan? And I go, well, here's a thing that happened. And they're like, what? They're so shocked. And I'm like, yeah, you don't remember that because you didn't have kids then. But I do. My kid didn't get preschool that year, but she went somewhere else. Um, but um, she didn't get it here in Norwood, but as soon as it got back here in Norwood, plus we got Montessori preschool, she went and I was so happy to walk her to school only one block instead of driving her somewhere. Um, yeah.
Um, that is one more thing that I need to say about the forecast. Uh, you, you know, that, uh, because I've said this over and over and over again, I always forecast based on what's current law. And so current law right now is the governor's vetoes are still in place. And um, there are no additional um, property tax inflation restrictions in place. And I don't know if that's going to change or not. But if it does, the forecast has to have to be restated because that, that is not in the forecast. I, I don't have a crystal ball to know what's going to pass in the future, so I, I didn't include that. Hopefully it doesn't pass, but we'll see.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, that includes our presentation. We're going to move on in our agenda, section three. This is Personnel Superintendent Recommendations, and I'll turn the floor over to Superintendent, Ms. Ronan.
Thank you, President Atwood. Item uh, number one, or actually 3.01, item one. It's a resignation. We do have two employees who are leaving us for other employment. I want to thank them for their service. Next, item 3.02, employment. Item number one, we welcome three new student assistants who are joining us. Item number two is the stipend for Mr. Stacy for additional duties. Item number three, it's really just a movement on the salary scale for an employee. Item number four, um, this individual's actually changing positions. Then item five, supplementals. Uh, these are the clubs and extra duties that teachers take on additional responsibilities. So as you can see, we've got lots of individuals doing lots of after school programming. Then uh, number six is kindergarten camp. This was from August. We had three additional employees who I need to be paid for working at kindergarten camp in August. Item number seven, this is our. Item number seven, this is our after school program, avenues for success. We're fortunate that the federal funds have been released for our program and Mrs. Ferguson, the director, she's been busy hiring for all of our sites. So that goes on to the next page. Then number eight, or a pupil service contracts, usually they're coaches, but in this case, this is for all our musical and band programs for the fall. A lot of them are around our play, which this year is Freaky Friday. And I believe that is everything. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Ronan. May I have a motion to approve the employment recommendations?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
All right, with those approved, we're going to move on to section four in our agenda. This is the Education Committee Report, and I'd like to turn the floor over to Board Member, Mrs. Rarica.
Thank you. We have some field trips coming up. Norwood View is going to Green Acres and another Green Acres and, oh, and then middle school is going to the Heritage Bank Center and the Centa Center. Sharpsburg going to Green Acres and the Fire Department and the Children's Theater and Camp Kemble Guard and the Montessori is going to the Art Museum. I'd like to make a motion that we approve these field trips. Second.
Any discussion?
I'm really proud that I remembered to make a motion, didn't wait for somebody to tell me to do it.
Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
All right, with those field trips approved, we'll move on to our next item in our agenda. This is section five, this is our Policy Committee Report, and I'd like to turn the floor over to Board Member, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have the first reading of eight policies and revisions. Start with J E C E, Student Withdrawal from School, and J F C J, Weapons in the School. Both have been updated to remove driver's license, suspensions, penalties based on House Bill twenty nine, A F C dash two, which is also G C N dash two, Evaluation of Professional Staff and Administrators, Changes to Reflect New House Bill Thirty Three Legislative Changes Impacting O D E and S B O E, I G C B Innovative Education Program. This policy has been retitled and revamped. It allows for districts to submit ideas for programming for approval. Additional changes reflect new House Bill Thirty Three Legislative Changes Impacting O D E and S B O E, O D E dash R, Computer Online Services, Added A Few Changes to Safeguard Our District Technology Devices and Safeguard Student Information, D E C A, Administration of Federal Grant Funds. It's been revised to reflect changes to the Uniform Grant Guidance Requirements, D F R dash R, Purchasing Procedures, The District Changes, District Changes to Blanket P O Procedures, and J F C K, Use of Cell Phones and Electronic Communication Devices by Students, Revised Reflect Changes to the ODU Model Policy. I'd like to make a motion that we approve those eight policies, the first reading of those eight policies and revisions.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions on these policies? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
All right, with that passing, we've had the first reading of those eight policy amendments. Moving on to item number six in our agenda, this is the Building and Grounds Committee Report, and I'd like to turn the floor over to Vice President, Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to read the report from our Operations Director, John Peter. He's given me an update here for the Williams Avenue Beautification Project. We are still projecting the completion by the end of September. Playsets were installed last week and the ground safety padding is being completed, was being completed over this past weekend. The second coating of asphalt was poured in the parking area closest to the building on the administration side and the line striping was also completed. Landscaping was complete as well. If you happen to go by our building, you'll see some new plants and our handicap parking area that's right out front next to the ramp at the administration building as well. We've got a picnic table coming once the gravel is settled in that area so that parents have a gathering spot in the mornings and after schools to get their kiddos. Other items throughout the district with assistance from Norwood Public Works, sixteen tons of ball field dirt has been added to the Millcrest Ball Field for the upcoming varsity season, as well as eight tons added to the softball field on the high school campus. And in the clinic area of the high school, the walls have been patched and painted with the anticipation of healthcare connections taking occupancy soon. The boilers at the high school have been serviced and prepared for colder temperatures that will be coming, and lights have been installed in the vestibule in the middle school auditorium along the ramped flooring entrance. This was a safety measure to help show the changes in elevation as you enter the auditorium. I appreciate that update from Mr. Peter. On our approval list, we only have one request for usage currently. That request is for October eighteenth in the evening. Norwood Church is going to host their Fall Fest and they would like to use the primary parking lot to host a trunk or treat that's open to the community. It will also feature a touch a truck, fire truck that will be onsite as well for the kiddos to come and check out, thanks to our, our Norwood Fire Department for that. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this facility's usage.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Peter while he's here?
Love your landscaping. I noticed it on my way in.
Great.
All right, Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
With that approved, we'll move on to item number seven in our agenda. This is the Finance Committee Report, and I'd like to turn the floor back over to our Treasurer, Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Mr. President. On seven point oh one, the CFO report and monthly reports are attached for your review and approval, as well as the change order listing for Williams. Seven point oh two, the financial forecast and assumption. Seven point oh three, appropriation resolution and four twelve certificate, that is our budget for the year, and it is now entering its permanent state. Seven point oh four, then and now purchase orders. We have one purchase order that needs further approval. Seven point oh five, a resolution declaring transportation impractical. There were two new students on there that needed to be approved. Seven point oh six, there are two new accounts that need approved. And seven point oh seven, return of funding, to approve the return of unused funding for Shepherd Chemical as residential property values increase in our district. We've seen fewer disadvantaged students stay in our district at receiving services birth through three years of age from vendors paid via the Shepherd Chemical donations. Therefore, we are unable to provide data on impact from those services, which is a critical element for this funding. We are extremely appreciative of the years of funding and good work that Shepherd Chemical has provided to the youngest of our Norwoods residents, and we wish nothing but the best for this program moving forward. They are simply finding a new fiscal agent for their funding and it's kind of tough working with a public school because we have all these rules and regulations. So we're just returning unused funding that we have unused. Seven point oh eight, the alternate school funding, school food service agreement with Milford Schools. This is just the agreement that we send annually into the Department of Education, and that is all for finance.
May I have a motion? Actually, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Finance Report, items seven point zero one through seven point zero eight.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Thank you to Shepherd Chemical for supporting us all these years.
Yeah, so I just want to, it's a little complicated what's, what's happened there. So, you know, with that program, they needed to have a fiscal agent that could make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. But part of that is, you know, they serve kids from birth to three or birth to two?
I think five, two, I guess.
Yes, actually, they do start with pregnant women and then, yes, zero, they say zero to five, but we really pick children up at age three in preschool now.
Right.
But they will continue to work with them if they're in their program.
Correct.
I remember some getting worked with because COVID, they weren't going into school. I had some friends who had them come into their kids to do preschool, but they probably don't do that now because.
Right. But part, part of the, part of the, the critical element there was data that they would get from those kids once they came to us. And so a lot of those kids aren't coming to us because, you know, a lot of them are transient and they move around and so it's hard to collect that data. So, so, you know, they're just going to find a new fiscal agent and we wish them the best.
That's right.
They're still going to do good work.
They're still going to do good work.
They will, for sure.
All right. Any other questions about anything on the finance agenda? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
All right, I did have one more thing I wanted to say.
Go ahead and say it.
So, gosh, I wanted to go back to item number, not that this changes anything in what we just did, but item number seven point zero two, the financial forecast and assumptions. So I just want, so this is something we typically do in November. And because of the way the state changed how they want school districts to report, we're doing it now in September instead of approving this in November.
Right.
Right. So it's, it's a little early in our schedule, but, you know, still very worthwhile and we have to pass it, or we had to pass it this month for us to meet the deadline to get it to the state. So.
Yes.
Just wanted to stay, say that. All right, we're going to move on. Section eight, which is public comment. We don't have anybody here present to speak to us, so we'll move on to board announcements. Section nine, any, any board members have anything they want to share?
No, Sharpsburg had picture day today, so I can't wait to see all the little cute pictures that are coming out. And I'm, I haven't seen the makeup day, but I'm sure if kiddos missed, there will be a makeup day for that. So if you, if your kiddo did not make it to Sharpsburg today, check the calendar and see when makeup pictures are.
I'm not sure what Mary's going to say. We should have superintendents first so I don't say things that she's going to say.
You don't want to steal your thunder, Mary.
I know they did this, but Mary might talk about it.
Go ahead. Mine is more H G T V like than before and after pictures of the beautification project. So you can talk about anything else.
I know Sharpsburg had a drive in movie event and I'm sure that was pretty cute. Um, oh, and the, the play, they need more people for the play, so you can still try out for the play. This one.
All right. Anybody else? We'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Atwood. All right, we, we had a homecoming September fifth, and I think most of the board was there. There's our band, there's our court and our homecoming king and queen. I thought they deserved to be up there on the screen so their parents could see. Then, as promised, I have before and after pictures. This was, this was when we had this giant hole, it looked like a swimming pool, where we looked out the windows at the beginning of July.
It still kind of looks like a swimming pool.
Yes. And then the beginning of September. See, we have asphalt and we have that, that pretty blue coverage. There we go again, that's what we look like in July. And now look at, that's the preschool play area. This is compliments of Nicole. She was so thoughtful, she went out there and got pictures.
Yay.
All right, there's our front, our, our handicap parking and welcome area in the front. Now that's what it looks like. So there's before and after, the parking lot from July to September, pretty impressive. The new shrubs arrived just two days ago, so that was really wonderful because there's just amazing landscaping out there. Playground is almost finished. There, that green thing or mound you can climb on, but I think they've put heavy bags on them to try to secure them, so they don't.
I don't think they're still there, the bags.
Look at our beautiful new shrubs and trees. So our beautification project is almost complete, and I think since it's almost finished, maybe we should have a little, we were thinking maybe a little ribbon cutting on October first out on the playset on the monkey bars between eight and eight thirty and have a coffee truck for the parents, especially to thank them, well, district wide, but here just because it's been very messy and the parents have been very patient for the last six or eight weeks.
That and the neighbors behind us that.
And the neighbors behind us because there's been lots of noise and lots of dust.
Yeah.
So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Ronan. We'll move on to the Great Oaks Report, and I'll turn the floor back over to Vice President, Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, coming up on October eighth, which is our next board meeting, we'll be doing our own ribbon cutting and touring the new facility. We, I think I remember I told you guys last year, we were expanding a new building for our electrical vehicle program, which is a new grant the state provided us to go into that particular curriculum. So we will be cutting the ribbons on that. And the project was made possible by a state grant to double the Laurel Oaks Welding and Fabrication Program, as well as adding a new alternative electric vehicle technician, as well as a law enforcement program at that campus. We had our enrollment numbers come in for this year, a thirty one percent increase since 2018. We have three thousand four hundred ninety four student enrollment for this year over, over our four campuses, which is the most we've seen in quite some time. We also had a really cool update on the national level. Our former Lieutenant Governor, now Senator John Husted, introduced a bill on, or excuse me, an act on September fourth called FEED, the Food Eligibility for Education and Development Act. This bill will update Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Programs, SNAP eligibility rules so that students who are eighteen to twenty one and enrolled in career technical education programs are, will be allowed to work part time without their earnings counting against their family's current SNAP benefits. SNAP, students enrolled in career and tech education programs currently working hard to prepare for high end and high demand jobs. This bill will correct outdated SNAP laws so that CTE students enrolled can continue their education without jeopardizing their family's benefits. So that was just a really cool thing that we saw, and it's going to help out a lot of our students, especially the adult ed students who are transitioning, but still those, those incomes count against their family's benefits. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice President Ballard. Nine point zero four, this is the Community Television Board Report. I am assuming that report from Mrs. Cole who has left us. So I don't have an official report from Tyler this month. I'm sure I'll get a more detailed report next month, but N C T does a fantastic job of filming and showing our sporting events, these meetings. They do a great job with the work that they do on the city level with all of the meetings that, that they are responsible for airing on public television. So they, they do a fantastic job with the small number of people that, that they have there. So I'll have more to share with the group next month. With that, I'll turn it over to the OSBA Legislative Report, and I'll turn it back over to Vice President Ballard.
Thank you again. All right. Ohio unveiled a seven point one million career pathway investment for new on demand occupations. This will be eligible for, for schools statewide that are investing in career pathway supports. According to the announcement, this is a two-year funding strategy aiming to better prepare Ohio's students for in-demand careers with advising, mentoring and exposure to different professions and expanded career tech education, as well as job placement opportunities through their high schools. This is another way that we're going to build a brighter future for Ohio, said Governor Dwyane. These networks will equip schools across the state with tools and partnerships that they need while giving students opportunities to pursue careers in high wage in-demand jobs. The funding includes a three point one million dollar increase in fiscal year twenty six and four million in twenty seven, for which districts and schools in the regional, and regional partners may apply. The funds will be distributed across Ohio's seven jobs, Ohio's regions, using a formula that considers enrollment, regional growth potential, and the need to maintain essential services. So this will be a rebranding of the previously known Ohio So this will be a rebranding of the previously known Ohio College Tech Prep Support Teams. OSBA also announced officially on August 12th the appointment of Thomas Holser as the next chief executive officer. He went into effect on September 1st. Um, I mentioned that he had come into, and into that position last month. He has officially started. He is joining OSBA after serving as superintendent in the Perrysburg Exempted Village Schools for the past 18 years and leading school districts for a total of 25 years, including seven years in the Downriver Detroit area. Additionally, he had served as the Chair of the Alliance for High-Performing Schools, co-chaired Ohio's Fair School Funding Work Group Base Cost Subcommittee, and founded KATE, the K through 16, a regional coalition of K through 12 and higher ed leaders for Northwest Ohio. Founded in 1955, OSBA represents more than 700 publicly-elected school boards and approximately 3,500 school board members who serve Ohio's 1.6 million public school students. So we look forward to seeing what he has to do for us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice President Ballard, it's a good report. Finally, I'll turn it over to Board Member Mrs. Rarica for the Avenues for Success Report.
Thank you. So you might have noticed in your texts and emails that you've gotten, um, a request from Avenues for Success to have your kiddo fill out the interest form for the clubs and encourage your kids to do so. There's probably a lot of cool choices. I know my children have always loved the clubs they have done. Even mine did sewing when she was young, and now she sews like a genius. And she did guitar, and now she plays violin. So those clubs can actually be really important and shape your kid's pathway. So, um, please do that, and especially so that avenues will know how many kiddos that they need to prepare for. That is all.
Thank you.
Clubs will start next month.
There you go. All right, that concludes our report section. We'll move on to section 10 on our agenda, this is future meeting notification. Looks like we're scheduled to have our committee meeting on October 14th here at this office, and then the following week on October 23rd at the Mini Auditorium, where we'll do our first Rising Stars of the Year. Do I have a motion to approve future meetings?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Um, we are meeting on the 14th at 4 o'clock instead.
So it may, we, we may end up adding a special meeting?
Right, I just.
To this?
I just have that on there, I just want to make sure that that's a noted, that's still the date.
That is still the date.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just keeping it in my calendar that we might be here early.
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
I just haven't decided on a time yet.
We haven't.
That's the date. Okay.
Yeah.
I just put it in there because I've got school during the day, so I hope it's not.
Okay. Yeah, so the 14th, um, and, and if, if for whatever reason, we need to pick another date for that other discussion.
Okay.
We'll, we'll talk about that here in a minute.
No problem.
Okay. But for the two regular meetings that we have on our agenda, we're going to approve those and may add another one.
No worries.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the role.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Townen?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
All right, with those dates and times approved, we'll move on to item number 11 in our agenda. This is executive session. And in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1, which is the Appointment, Employment, Dismissal, Displan, Promotion, Demotion, or Compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual. Can I get a motion to enter into executive session?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the role.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Townen?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes. It is.
Seven forty-nine, we are back from executive session. Item number twelve on our agenda is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.